Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being part of our meeting this evening. I'd like to call this meeting the Brooklyn City Council to order. Mary Jo, can you please call the roll?
Mary Delbeer.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Sue Broden.
Here.
Ryan Mancher.
Here.
Matt Ryan Sharkey.
Here.
Andy Salhertz.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Would you please stand in joint manhood pledge allegiance? Following the pledge allegiance will be led in prayer this evening by Mrs. Mary Delbeer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, in these pandemic times of isolation, shutdowns, and political unrest, we have felt fragile and frustrated and sometimes and somehow at the mercy of waves rocking the boat of our lives and our society. We know families shipwrecked on the rocks of joblessness, no insurance, death of loved ones. We hope and pray for healing in so many ways. These last few months have seemed like an endless storm for us. We long for connection, communion, peace, and healing, and hope that life may be transformed to a new normal. We want the darkness to dawn into light. We simply ask that you bless all here present at our council, our protective forces, and our city leaders. We thank you for all our abundant blessings in these difficult times. We thank you for being in the boat with us. I would like to observe a moment of silence for Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg, who died roughly a week ago. She was the second woman to ever serve on the Supreme Court. She worked her entire career as an advocate for the fair treatment of women and workers. She worked to eliminate gender-based stereotypes in legislation and regulations. She was truly one of the great justices of the Supreme Court, and she will be missed. And now, a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you. Please be seated. Thank you, Mrs. Bellbeer. The first item on our agenda this evening is our minutes from the meeting dated September 14th of 2020. Are there any comments or questions regarding those minutes?
To approve.
Sir.
To approve the minutes, Mary Delbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Broden.
Yes.
Ryan Mancher.
Yes.
Matt Ryan Sharkey.
Yes.
Andy Salhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
At this time, we will have a guest speaker from the Cuyahoga County Public Library, Tracy Struble. So, welcome, Ms. Struble. Thank you for being here. This microphone. Tell us what you've got to tell us. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. I'm Tracy Struble. I'm the executive director of the Cuyahoga County Public Library. I want to acknowledge my wonderful colleagues here this evening, your branch manager from the Brooklyn branch, Kathy Sullivan, and your city councilwoman, Kathy Pucci, from the Fairview Park branch. This evening, I'm grateful for the opportunity to share information with you about Issue 70, which is the issue that will protect our library, our number-one library, well into the future. It represents a one-mill tax increase. The library is funded primarily by property tax dollars, and it has been 12 years since we asked the residents that we serve for additional funding to help support the library. In those 12 years, we've seen a 14% reduction in the revenue that we earn from our property tax base. We've been able to make many, many cuts and streamline and still maintain the best library services in the nation. But at this point, if we don't ask the voters for additional support, we will have to begin making cuts that will impact the quality of service, such as a reduction in locations and hours. With these dollars, we'll not only be able to maintain all the incredible breadth of services that we provide, but we'll be able to enhance those as well. We'll be able to improve our buildings, especially in the area of safety and security. We'll be able to continue to offer workforce services, especially as we are heading into a significant downturn in the economy and high unemployment. The library is your local resource for helping people find jobs, improve their skills, get ready for that job interview, create their resume. Kathy and Kathy both know well that we see job seekers every day in our branches looking for guidance and support, as well as technology and connection and bandwidth that they may not have at home in their own homes. So, we're also very well-known for our student support services, especially today when so many kids are seeking a connection to their schools. Many families don't have internet access in our most challenged communities or devices to do that remote schooling, and across the county, we're providing that connection, providing those resources. In fact, when the library was closed, at the worst of the pandemic, we saw almost 70,000 connections to the internet in our parking lots. These are families who are trying to do remote schoolwork, trying to apply for benefits, trying to apply for jobs, and better their lives. The library has a great track record of continuing to change and adapt to meet the needs of all of our residents across Cuyahoga County, and we, of course, will continue to do that as needs change. The Cuyahoga County Public Library services will change and improve. We're very excited about the opportunity to continue to serve communities such as Brooklyn and the 46 other communities that we serve across this great county. I'm happy to provide information in the form of handouts. If you'd like more information about the campaign, you can seek that out at www.voteforccpl.org. So, we're Issue 70 on your November 3 ballot. Of course, you can vote early. You can apply for a ballot at the library. You can register to vote at the library. Happy to answer any questions that anyone might have, but again, I'm thrilled to have the opportunity to share this with you face-to-face. It's been a challenging time to campaign, and I'm glad to get out into the community and share the good word of the library.
Thank you, Mrs. Struble. Any questions, show and cancel. Very good. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
At this time, we will have the public session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say for the good involvement of the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address, and you'll be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or fewer.
Good evening, everybody. How's everybody tonight? I do have a question about 70. Have that one mill, what is that actual dollars to the average household? Have you kind of figured that out?
Sure. It's $1.91 per $100,000 of home value.
$1.91. So, we're talking about...
I'm sorry, $2 when I discussed.
All right. So, $3 a year?
$3 a month.
A month?
For the average.
Wow. 75 cents a week. Pretty impressive. I think we need to try to work on that. What do you think? Okay. You all know me from the census. Did I give my address? I'm sorry. 4825 Bentonwood Drive, Brooklyn, Ohio. Let me give you a little bit of an update.
I'm sorry. Just for the record, could you state your name as well?
I'm sorry. John Wagner. I apologize. I was so excited about the 70 cents. And I bring that up tonight. I hadn't decided, how are you? I hadn't decided. I didn't know it was happening tonight, but it kind of works into what I wanted to talk about a little bit. While I was working at the census, I probably hit 90% of all the libraries for their support. And not having children for many, many years, I hadn't been in a library. How impressed was I to see what a library does for us today? It's absolutely incredible, and it's filled with dedicated people who are there to do nothing but to help us and our families to survive, to learn, to grow. So, I think for $3 a month, we have to, that's less than a Starbucks, isn't it? So, I think we have to figure out how to do that. So, let me support that if I can. Next, I wanted to give you a quick little update on the census. I did leave the census the end of June. It was a great 18 months. I loved it. I felt like we accomplished a lot. We are in great shape here. I haven't looked in the last two weeks, but we are approaching the high 90 percentile of everybody in Brooklyn as far as answering the call for the census. This whole region in the west is in the high 90%. Parma, all the little communities surrounding that. But we're not there yet in the inner city. We're only at 50% on a number of areas in the city, and I'm going to talk to a minute, for a minute tonight about why do we care? We care for a whole bunch of reasons. Number one, for social-economic reasons. But the other thing is, I lived all over the country in a lot of major cities, and all the suburbs are dependent upon the wealth and the growth of the city that supports them. Cleveland is our hub. The more Cleveland improves, develops, increases in value, that flows out into our community. We are what, six miles from downtown Cleveland, something like that? That is nothing. We are suburb. So, as we go into the future and as Cleveland continues to do better, Brooklyn is going to be brought right along behind it. My real estate background, I owned a company for 17 years. I watched it happen, and it's happening here. So, yes, we have to get that done. So, I'm glad to hear that we've delayed the shutdown for another month. We'll see what happens over the next week or two with the continuing lawsuits, but I did want to give you a little bit of an update on what's happening. But more important than anything else, a lot of you helped. A lot of you went to bat. I asked many times for your support and help, and you all helped to get what we needed to get done. So, thank you very much. And now, we're on to the election. We'll see how that all goes. Have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Victor Ardito, 7439 Outlook Avenue. I was at the Sam's Club the one day and was talking to one of the guys out there that works there. Does the city know anything about the supposedly sewer district bought part of the Walmart's parking lot to make a basin?
We'll have the mayor address that question.
I was just wondering. I know a lot of people are worried about that flooding there. I was at a grass hill one weekend, Thursday, when it was storming like a son of a gun, and he said something about they cut a bunch of trees down in Big Creek, which I don't know about, but everything they did. And the next thing he says, I gotta go, and his husband came in because their roof was flooding inside the kitchen. That's why I'm going to have a Walmart next. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Victor. Good to see you back here, too.
And I brought friends this time.
Yeah, I see that. I can't see who they are, but I'm glad that they're here.
The Reno Banditos.
All right. So, anyone else? All right. Well, now, move on with reports of committees, commissions, and boards. We'll begin this evening with the Finance Committee. We did meet at 6:15 just prior to tonight's council meeting to discuss the following. The first item was Resolution 2020-3, and we hope to pass this by suspension rules that say this is accepting the amounts and dates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing necessary tax levies and certifying them to the city, or excuse me, the county fiscal officer. And this is an annual resolution that's passed every year in regards to our property tax mileage for the following year of 2021. There's no change to that. The inside mileage is 5.9 mils, and this coincides with the tax budget that was already passed. Next is Resolution 2020-5, requesting the county fiscal officer advance taxes from the proceeds of the 2020 tax levies pursuant to High Revised Code, Section 321.34. Again, annual resolution, and it enables us to receive the tax proceeds for the fiscal year 2021. Next was Ordinance 2020-32. This was up for third reading and adoption. This authorizes the mayor to enter an agreement with West Creek Conservancy for the sale of certain real property known as a portion of 8707 Memphis Avenue. We are not prepared with the final numbers for this yet, and so, this is, we will vote to defer this to our October 13 meeting. Next was Ordinance 2020-40, and this was the TIF ordinance. We talked about this last time in regards to some property that was developed up off of Tideman Road, and that is on second reading. And then, the last item for the Finance Committee was Ordinance 2020-42, authorizing the updated capital improvement plan for 2020. This would authorize a $500 increase for engineering and feasibility study for the city center site to do our due diligence there. The original amount was $49,000. The administration is requesting a $500 increase to $49,500. And that concludes my report for the Finance Committee. Again, we meet at 6:15 prior to the start of our council meetings. At this time, we'll move on with the Recreation Board, Councilman Tansky.
Recreation Center will be open starting October 1st by reservation only. Sunday, 12:00 p.m. to 1:00 p.m., seniors only. Sunday, 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., seniors only. Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., seniors only. Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The Rec Center is now accepting all community partnership day passes in addition to paid memberships, memberships corporate, Parma Heights, Lyndale, and Sosa. The exercise class schedule will be posted on the city's website at www.brooklynohio.gov on the Brooklyn Recreation Center's Facebook page, where there are copies at the cashier's counter. For more information, you can email the Rec Center at reinfo@brooklynohio.gov or call 216-351-5334. The next Recreation Board meeting will be held on October 19th, 7:00 p.m. Rec Center meeting. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky. Next up is the Plenary Commission, Councilwoman Sue Broden.
Thank you. Our next meeting is Wednesday, October 7th at 6:00 p.m., and it is a short agenda. The summer season must be winding down. We have three things, an illuminated wall sign for 4308 Ridge Road, a request for an illuminated wall sign at 1140 Brook Park Road, and a request for final site approval for SiteWorks at 1 American Road.
Thank you. The committee of the whole meeting took place following the Finance Committee meeting, and we do every regular scheduled council meeting, and we discussed the following three ordinances. The first was Ordinance 2020-35, amending Sections 1360.21 inspection and 1360.22 right of entry to the codified orders of the city of Brooklyn. We talked about this at the last council meeting. This updates our code to make sure that we're in line with the Constitution, the Fourth Amendment, so I want to thank Mr. Butler and Mr. Coulter for that. Ordinance 2020-38, authorizing the mayor to grant a conservation easement to West Creek Conservatory and the Ohio nonprofit for Stickney Creek stabilization. And of course, this is for the work that's going to be done down here in Memorial Park. The plans have been updated and are now available for council to view. This is just on second reading, so we'll talk more about this when we vote on it in the next council meeting. And then, lastly, similar to 38 is Ordinance 2020-41. This is on first reading. This is to grant a conservation easement to West Creek Conservatory, our conservancy once again for Big Creek preservation, and once again, this is on first reading. All committee, the whole meetings take place just prior to our council meetings, following our Finance Committee meeting. All are welcome to attend, and for the time being, they're being held right here in council chambers. That's all we have for reports of committees, commissions, and boards. We'll now move on with reports of council. Begin this evening with Mrs. Bellbeer.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to extend my condolences to the Hovan family on the loss of Rich Hovan. Mr. Hovan had over 50 years of service to the city of Brooklyn. When I was talking last night, I had gone to the wake and I had talked to his sister, Peg, who worked here for Brooklyn for many years. She said she wrote, that he wrote the first cell phone ticket, so it's just a little bit of trivia there. He started out in the Service Department, then the Police Department, and in his retirement was a deputy in the mayor's court. He was an avid veteran and a proud staff sergeant in the U.S. Air Force in Vietnam. He was honored today at Mass at St. Thomas More Church and then buried in the National Cemetery in Ridman, Ohio. And I'd like to say thank you for your service, Mr. Hovan. Rest in peace. Secondly, the deadline to register to vote for the November 2020 presidential election is October 5th at 9:00 p.m. The deadline to return your completed vote-by-mail ballot application is October 31st at 12:00 p.m. The deadline to return your voted ballot to the Board of Elections is November 3rd at 7:30 p.m. If you choose to use the ballot drop box, it is located at 2925 Euclid Avenue in the rear parking lot of the Board of Elections. You can drop it off 24 hours a day, seven days a week. A bipartisan team collects all voter registration cards, vote-by-mail ballot applications, and voted ballots from the drop box throughout the day. I recently talked to our school board president, Bonnie Barczek, and she informed me, of course, today was the first day of school, and they had a wonderful, smooth opening. Everyone was thrilled to be back to the classroom. It was hybrid learning schedule, and even though some of the kids were kidding around about not recognizing each other with the masks on, they were so happy to be back. All activities are back, such as band and sports, but they have to follow a certain protocol, and they're not back to full capacity. The football team, I was told, is doing great and has a promising future. I'm going to keep my fingers crossed. I'd also like to thank the band for practicing last week. Where I live, I could hear their practice, and it was just such a sound of normalcy that it was so nice to hear. The next school board meeting they're going to have will be October 20th. I'd also like to thank Tracy Strumble for explaining everything about Issue 70. Years ago, when I was a kid growing up, the library, you just went there, you went there to study, and, you know, they had a reading class in the summer. But now, libraries do so much more. They tutor children, they have lunches, that it's just such a broad span of help that they can do for so many people. So, I encourage all to think about and vote for Issue 70. I know I'm going to do it. And lastly, if you get a chance to go to the Starbucks on Tideman and go through the drive-thru, it would be a nice little treat to treat yourself to a pumpkin latte. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Tansky.
I would like to offer my sincerest condolences to the family and friends of retired Brooklyn police officer Richard E. Hovan, who passed away in September 24. I would like to give a shout-out to Councilwoman Meg Ryan Sharkey, who started Keep Brooklyn Beautiful. This program began in 2019 with volunteers picking up trash throughout the city of Brooklyn with the community cleanup days and has continued this year. Last October, Brooklyn Beautiful officially became part of Keep Ohio Beautiful and Keep America Beautiful, said Brooklyn City Councilman Andy Salhertz, who is also the director of Keep Brooklyn Beautiful. Working under their umbrella, Brooklyn receives donated supplies such as pickers, gloves, and trash bags. As a volunteer myself, I have seen firsthand all the hard work that each volunteer puts in forth, keeping our city clean. So, again, thank you to Meg and Andy and all the volunteers who continue to make this program a huge success in our community. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, Mrs. Broden.
Thank you. I also would like to offer my heartfelt sympathies to the Hovan family. Although hearts are heavy, they must also be filled with pride with the life led with many years of service to both our country and our community. We're fortunate to attend him as part of our Brooklyn community. I'd like to make just one small correction to Councilwoman Bellbeer. It's the 15th day of school, first day in person, but I'd like to say, our students worked really, really hard remotely from their homes. We have so much parent support, and I know that when I saw my second graders today, we started talking about addition strategies we learned on Zoom, they started naming them off. So, we can't forget about those 15 days. Today was the 15th day of school. Thanks for letting me make that correction. Also, going along with schools, I would just like to take a moment to congratulate a longtime school employee and Brooklyn resident. Debbie Colai will be retiring on September 30th. If you had a child in the CHATS program, you know Mrs. Colai. For over 20 years, she watched over Brooklyn students who had work in parents and needed to be at school earlier or later, and her last day will be September 30th. I have the pleasure of working with Mrs. Colai for 10 years in CHATS, and I know she will be missed by many families. And lastly, I would like to wholeheartedly support Issue 70. Our award-winning excellent libraries are such a jewel for our greater Cleveland community, but also as a teacher, there are so many benefits. I have an educator's card, and our library allows me to take 150 books out to share in my classroom. So, and when I talk to other teachers, that is not common. That is not common at all. So, they are just such a jewel, and we need to do whatever we can. I think they're worth more than that, $3, but if that's all they're asking from me, then that's what I'll give them this time. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, Mrs. Ryan Sharkey.
Thank you. We had a successful community cleanup this past weekend with over a dozen volunteers. We cleaned up along Brook Park and Tideman Roads, and Councilman Salhertz and Tansky both went and did the ramps once again. We have two final cleanups left for this year, the first being this coming Sunday. We'll be meeting at 9:00 a.m. at Memorial Park. You can register online or just show up. We hope to have even more new faces this weekend, so hope to see you there. And as has been mentioned before, but is so important, we still have one week to register to vote and to still vote in this November's very important election. In addition to the president, there are numerous candidates and issues, like the library issue you heard about this evening, all the way down the ballot. So, please make sure that your registration is up to date so that you can vote this November. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Salhertz.
Thank you. My sincere condolences to the family of Richard Hovan and his passing. Actually, I worked with Rich when I got out of high school and going to college in the summers. One opportunity guys had around here was to work up at the summers at the service garage, so I ended up working with Rich and two other gentlemen, Phil Abraham and Spawacki. It was kind of a good learning experience. Thank you to Tracy Strumble coming up tonight, explaining about Issue 70. There's a lot of support for it. It's a lot of good stuff. People can afford it. Please vote yes for it. Another thank you to Bubba Gyard and all the volunteers that helped out last Tuesday. Approximately five tons of food was handed out to individuals and family. It totaled, when they figure out the calculations, it helped 623 people. As Meg mentioned, we had good cleanups this past weekend. We had the opportunity to take a picture of it, kind of shocked some people how much we pick up. Special thanks out to Rich and his cool crew from Paul Davis Restoration coming in to help. The way we advertised through Keep America Beautiful, there's a volunteer opportunities portal, and they were looking to help any organization. We were one of the organizations that still was doing stuff with this COVID time, so it's just nice to get some extra hands and faces to come and help pick up litter. The mural project at Arby's is moving along. Talked to Sherwin-Williams representative. He just needs a few days' notice, so we're just waiting for Mr. Casper and his students to come up with a final design that we can get approved. On the lighter side, maybe something that's non-COVID, maybe back to the days of pre-2020, Brooklyn Music Boosters, they're having a fundraiser at Chipoli this Saturday between 4:00 and 8:00 o'clock. You can either bring in a flyer or find it on your smartphone under Brooklyn Music Boosters, or just tell the cashier you're supporting the Brooklyn Music Boosters. They will give 33% of proceeds to that organization. And one last thing is that they also have another fundraiser, actually buying flowers now, bulbs, which you can plant now for the spring. And if you look at flowerpowerfundraising.com/brooklinmusicboosters, you can place your orders through there. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, Mrs. Pucci.
Thank you. Good evening. I also would like to offer my sincerest condolences to retired Officer Rich Hovan. Some may not know that Rich really embraced our cell phone law right from the start. It was enacted in 1999, and being first in the country, this was not really welcomed by everyone in law enforcement. Rich recognized the dangers of talking while driving, and he made it his mission to educate the public about these dangers. He did write the vast majority of the tickets, and he appeared in USA Today and also on The Oprah Winfrey Show. While on The Oprah Winfrey Show, Rich met Patty Peña, whose two-year-old daughter, Morgan, was killed. was killed when Patty's car was broadsided by a driver who was talking on the cell phone. I believe it was on Election Day when Mrs. Pena called Mayor Coin because she had just heard about Brooklyn's cell phone law. She wanted us to know her story and to thank us for passing the first cell phone law in the country. After Rich met her, whenever he issued a cell phone ticket, he showed the driver a photo of Meghan so that they could see firsthand, I'm sorry, Morgan, so that they could see firsthand the results of talking while driving. He also recorded her initials at the bottom of the tickets he issued. Rich was a veteran, a dedicated police officer who made our community safer, and most important, he was a man devoted to his family. He will be truly missed. And Chief, I'd also like to thank our officers who were volunteer honor guards yesterday at the wake. It was a very nice tribute to a deserving officer and his family. On September 15th, I participated in the branding meeting we had with representatives from the firm of Falgren Martin. It is a good group, we had a very good work session, and I believe that we were able to provide them with an understanding of who we are as a community. There will be a follow-up meeting sometime next week. I would also like to thank Mr. Stromble for coming here this evening to talk about Issue 70. Many residents do know that I do work for the library, but prior to that, I was a regular library patron along with my children and a big library supporter. And I can just share that I see firsthand every single day the positive impact that our library has in our community, from the vital services such as our homework center, of which Brooklyn had one of the first, to the life-enriching programs that we offer. So if you haven't been to one of our branches recently, make a visit and check out all we have to offer, or in this time of COVID, maybe not make a visit, but explore all the digital content, the research, resources, and programs that we offer online. So please support Issue 70, which is so vital to the future of our library. I too would like to say a few words about the late Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. Apart from anything political, she really had such a dramatic effect on our laws and our society through her efforts to secure equality and justice for everyone, long before she was ever a judge. She experienced discrimination at Harvard Law when she was one of nine women in a class of 500, and there was just one example, she was not allowed to study in the law library because she was a woman. When she graduated first in her class from a top law school, no one in New York would hire her because she was a woman. I know things in the workplace are dramatically different even from when I began working, and I think so much of this is taken for granted, and it's important to make sure younger generations understand what it was like, the progress that has been made, and also the importance to continue to advocate for equality. Just a couple of examples of the rights that Justice Ginsburg secured for women just in my lifetime, women being able to hold a job and also to get and keep a job while pregnant. It was pretty standard 50 years ago for women to be fired from their jobs when they were pregnant, and Justice Ginsburg herself hid her pregnancy while she was teaching at a law school in order to not be told that she couldn't teach. Women also now have the right to financial independence and equal benefits. Women could not sign a mortgage or even have a bank account without a male co-signer. Ginsburg's work paved the way for the Equal Credit Opportunity Act, which passed in 1974, and allowed women to apply for bank accounts, credit cards, and mortgages without a male co-signer. She also helped ensure that women could receive the same military housing allowances as men, and women are no longer required to pay more for pension plans than men to receive the same benefits. Justice Ginsburg also fought for the rights of men who were discriminated against when it came to social security benefits and military benefits when it was their wife who was in the military. There are a couple quotes of hers that are meaningful to me. The first was when she was asked about her legacy, she said, quote, "To make life a little better for people less fortunate than you." That's what I think a meaningful life is. Our lives, not just for one, excuse me, one lives not just for oneself, but for one's community. And the other quote is on leadership, and this is a quote, "Fight for the things that you care about, but do it in a way that will lead others to join you." She was also well-known for her close friendships with some who had polar opposite views from her own. She was a perfect example of the aspiration that it is possible to disagree with others without being disagreeable, and I think that is something we could all use a little more of. Finally, I would just like to ask or thank Mr. Ardito and Mr. Wagner for speaking, and Mr. Wagner, thank you so much for all of your tireless efforts on behalf of the census. I know how hard you worked, and you kept that very important issue at the forefront by coming here regularly, engaging our assistance, and also going to the library and going to different events to try and encourage as many people as possible to respond to the census. And I think the numbers show that your efforts really paid off. So thank you very much for your efforts. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pucci. Just a couple additional items this evening. Things already mentioned last, and Richard is October 5th. The ballot that's going to be voted on November 3rd is available on the county's website, so if you'd like to go on there and peruse that, so you're an educated voter when you walk into the voting booth. Of course, this is a presidential election, that's what gets most of the attention, but as Mr. Stromble mentioned tonight, there is other things on the ballot as well. That's the only issue, at least on the ballot in Brooklyn. But we'll also be voting for a state board of education member, a justice of the Ohio Supreme Court. Of course, the U.S. Representative as well as the state representative are on this ballot, as well as numerous judges at the appellate and the common pleas level. And so I would recommend going on the county board of elections website to look and find out what that ballot is, so you're informed when you go into the voting booth. I've had several people ask me about this whole mail-in and absentee voting. It's amazing, everything gets politicized today, and even the post office is now politicized. But there is a difference between mail-in and absentee voting. Ohio does not have the mail-in voting where you do not automatically get a ballot that's mailed to you. You've probably had numerous applications for a ballot sent to you, and you do have to send that in to get a ballot. It's the same thing that's been in Ohio for years. And as far as I'm conservative, and I've seen, it is a safe way of voting. My wife doesn't particularly care to go to the polls on Election Day, so she votes by mail, so you do have to request the ballot, and so make sure you send it in. If you're worried about getting there on time, mail it early, or I think it was Mrs. Valbeer that mentioned you can drop it off at the Board of Elections downtown. I've been to there many, many times. There's a locked box right in the middle of their parking lot, and it gets picked up numerous times during the day. And so, of course, ballot integrity is important, and so if you're most worried about ballot integrity and you want to get it right into the box yourself, go on November 3rd to vote. But I would recommend doing it early. We don't have a mail-in system where everyone automatically gets a ballot in Ohio that would overwhelm the system more than likely. You do have to request it in the state of Ohio, so if you're looking for that ballot that's not coming, you do have to request it. It's nothing new, it's been that way in Ohio for many, many years. But I would encourage you to be an educated voter, regardless of what your political affiliation is, to make sure that your voice is heard, and of course, all elections are important, as is this one. And that's all I have, so at this time, I'll turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you, Council President Van Kirk. I as well would like to express my condolences to the family of Rich Hoven. I think the council members did an extraordinary job of emphasizing why Rich was such a big loss to our community, and we are all really keeping them in our prayers and our thoughts during this time, especially one of our own employees, Chris, who works at the Recreation Center as a son. Thank you to Executive Director Tracy Stromble for coming up and talking about Issue 70. If you saw in the news recently, Cleveland was declared the poorest city in the nation, and, you know, that's terrible news, but it just goes to emphasize why the library is just so important. And again, this was said eloquently by council members. The library really does protect our society's most vulnerable. The services that they provide, the meals they provide, to ensure that we're giving back to those who really need it is so important. I know personally, you know, I use my Kindle all the time and take out books, I would be paying hundreds and hundreds of dollars a year to go buy those books. So I'm very thankful that we have such an extraordinary library with such an extraordinary collection that we can go right there and right on our phones, take out books. It's amazing, and I think that's something that we should continue to push forward and support in our community. Just want to give a couple updates. I talked about a new police station, new city hall, and the process moving forward. We have completed our owner's rep process. Internally, we have selected GPD to be our owner's rep. We are negotiating a fee agreement right now, which will come to city council probably the next meeting. Today was the closure of the RFQ for architects. We received 12 of those, so right away, we're going to have to have a turnaround time of reviewing and interviewing architects with the help of GPD. I also talked about at the last meeting First Energy. I know there was a lot of outages recently, and I met with our rep last Monday to talk about it. They have looked into, many of you reported your addresses, they looked at lines, they fixed a bunch of things. The follow-up question was, have there been any recent outages? And I really couldn't answer that question because we haven't internally received any reports. So my call out to you is if you are still experiencing any problems at home, please call city hall. You can call my office directly at 216-635-4220, and just let my assistant know your name and address, and, or you don't even have to provide your name, you could just give your address and the date and time that the outage happened, so we can do some follow-up. I appreciate that. And then the last thing is answering Mr. Ardito's question. You said that Sam's Club owners purchased something in Walmart's parking lot.
No.
That's what you-
Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District.
Okay, Regional Sewer District. So what is going on? I gave a little update at the last meeting, but what is going on? There's Sam's Club owner owns the, where the canal, the waterway goes through, all the way into the Walmart parking lot, about a half acre. The Sam's Club owner purchased Burger King and plans to demolish that. They do not have plans long-term for that. They have not decided whether they're going to do a retention base in there, but they know that that structure's presence doesn't help with the flooding issues. So they're going to be moving forward. That Regional Sewer District is, has become a partner in this moving forward, and speaking to them last week, they're talking about doing some dredging through the canalway as a short-term solution, as well as some help with the Sam's Club building to ensure that there's no flooding within their building. So there's definitely things going on, a lot of models have happened. The owner for Sam's Club has hired an engineer as well, is reviewing models, doing their own models. The city has asked for a couple models, so hopefully we'll have some good solutions coming up. But as I said at the last meeting, it took a couple decades for this to happen, and so there's no immediate solution that's going to stop this flooding anytime soon, but we can chip away at it for certain. So hopefully I answered your question. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, now the all directors' reports begin this evening with our rep commissioner, Mr. Tansky.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. So just an update on a few outdoor projects going on right now. Today, we actually started on the outdoor pool playground feature project. That should be about a two-week project, a small playground feature for kids ages 5 to 12, as added amenity to our outdoor pool. That's going to be up in a couple weeks. And Marquardt Park commenced today. They started the paving and renovation of the walking path around the perimeter of the park, and as part of this project, as well as the Richard Drive connecting path from Brook Lane all the way to Bentwood, that's going to be part of this project. We have advertised this project to start today, end on October 28th. We're hoping it should be done a little before that, but those are, I think, safe dates that we have advertised. We did notify all the residents that are directly adjacent to the park, along the path, along the streets that are going to be affected by the Richard Drive part of the project. So we notified everybody, posted on Facebook, and sent out a mass email to our recreation members, so we tried to cover all our bases there. If anybody has any questions about that project or any issues come up, please call us. Recreation Center's number is 216-351-5334. So give us a call if you have any questions about that project. And then the Stickney Creek renovation project, I don't have a real solid update at this point, other than we met a couple weeks ago about the, we had the 30% plan in hand meeting down in the park, actually. So not a lot of updates to give right now, they're still in the architectural planning phase with drawings coming out. So once we get more concrete info and some more dates, we'll definitely pass those along. So nothing concrete right now on that, but I would highly doubt October 26th, that's going to be pushed back a little, if I had to guess. We won't have the 60% plans in hand for another couple weeks, so that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky. Next up is our police chief, Chief Moke.
Are you okay?
I just wanted to thank city council and the Brooklyn community on behalf of our police department and the Hoven family. I know I've spent most of the day with them today. They were truly touched, but not surprised by the outreach that this community has reached out to them and showed so much love. There was a lot said about Rich, and there was so much more to say about him. If you knew him, I wouldn't have to say anything, but I do know 50 years of service to the Brooklyn community, when he came home from Vietnam, he really never left. He started at the Service Department and worked his way through the police department. 22 years on the motorcycle. If you've ridden a big motorcycle, you know that's an accomplishment unto itself. Fell down a few times, never really got hurt. He organized a lot of classic car shows, home days, St. Thomas More, anybody that asked. Really, that was Rich in a nutshell. He did any kind of favor for anybody at any time. The joke today was, "If you need me, call me," and he never said no. So, huge Tribe fan, go Indians, he's going to beat the Yankees tomorrow, he would have been watching it. So we're going to miss him dearly. Again, thank you for all your support and love and prayers.
Thank you, Chief. Next up is our building commissioner, Mr. Coulter.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to kind of reach out to residents. Over the past, this past spring and summer, we've had quite the uptick in residential work. Everybody's found time, found projects that they wanted to get done, and unfortunately, we've come across a lot of instances where residents did not go about the best way of hiring contractors. I just want to remind everybody that we, you know, have a contractor database on our website, the building department page, which has listed contractors that are registered and insured currently with the city, and that's a great resource to start with. Always feel free to contact myself, our assistant, Jim Machasik, with any questions on any contractors that you come across. A lot of these contractors are busy, but we have come across where, when the wrong contractors are hired and they did not get a permit from us when it's required, then we really are at a loss with being able to help you with those situations if it doesn't work out very well. Also, you want to make sure that contractors, when they do need permits, give those to you before they start work. A lot of times, that gets forgotten, and again, you know, we're not able to help if things don't quite go right. And that pretty much completes my report. If you have any questions, always feel free to call the building department at 216-635-4203. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter. Well, now moving on to legislation for this evening. First item we have is notification. The Friends of the Brooklyn Library will donate $1,500 to the city of Brooklyn for their storyboards. You may recall, last meeting, the Kiwanis donated some money for storyboards as well. There are 16 of them total. The Kiwanis money will cover 12 of them. The Friends of Brooklyn Library money will cover the rest of it, so thank you so much to the Friends of Brooklyn Library, the library's been on the spotlight tonight, so we thank you very much for that. The first item on the agenda is Resolution 2020-3, accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorize the necessary tax levies and certifying them with the county fiscal officer. Any comments or questions on that?
Can you just, we have to suspend the rules.
Second.
Just to suspend the rules, Mary Governor?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Brode?
Yeah.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan-Sharky?
Yes.
Andy Seltzer?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Wood Dapp?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Brode?
Yeah.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan-Sharky?
Yes.
Andy Seltzer?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Resolution 2020-5 is on second reading, requesting the county fiscal officer to advance 321.34. Ordinance 2020-32, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the West Creek Conservancy for the sale of certain real property known as a portion of 8707 Memphis Avenue. I'll make a motion that we defer this to the October 13th meeting.
Second. To defer, Mary Del Bear?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Brode?
Yeah.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Warren Shaggy?
Yeah.
Andy Seltzer?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Ordinance 2020-35 is on second reading, amending Sections 1360.21 inspection and 1360.22 right of entry of the codified ordinances of the city of Brooklyn. Ordinance 2020-38 is on second reading, authorizing the mayor to grant a conservation easement to West Creek Conservancy, an Ohio nonprofit corporation for Stickney Creek stabilization and restoration. Ordinance 2020-40 is also on second reading, declaring the improvement of certain real property to be a public purpose pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 5709.40B, declaring such improvements to be exempt from real property taxation, designating public infrastructure improvements to be made that will directly benefit such property, requiring annual service payments in lieu of taxes, designating a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of such service payments, and authorizing compensation payments to the Brooklyn City School District and Polaris Career Center Joint Vocational School District. On first reading this evening is ordinance 2020-41, authorizing the mayor to grant a conservation easement to West Creek Conservancy, an Ohio nonprofit corporation for Big Creek preservation. And lastly, on first reading is ordinance 2020-42, authorizing the updated capital improvement plan for 2020. That does conclude our agenda for this evening. Just one final note, our next council meeting will actually be on Tuesday, October 13th. We will not meet on the normal Monday, October 12th, in celebration of Columbus Day. Anyone else on the council, directors or mayor have anything to add? I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second. To adjourn, Mary Del Bear?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Brode?
Yeah.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Warren Shaggy?
Yes.
Andy Seltzer?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Have a blessed evening.